Using this new technology, so good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 19th, 2017, meeting of the Hutchinson City Council. Please call roll.
Hi, Iris Day Carvallo.
Here.
Soldner.
Here.
Inzkeep.
Here.
Deckent.
Here.
Dave Line.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome Pastor Kim Berry this morning.
You're invited to pray with me. God of the sunrise, thank you for another day filled with opportunities. We know that life is challenging and hard. We remember those affected by hurricanes and pray that needs will be filled with resources and compassionate people. God, you are the calm through the storms of life. Today, as we plan together in this meeting, oh Lord, direct our leaders. Give them wisdom and guidance. Help everyone through constructive conversations and decision-making. Be with us and guide this meeting for us in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next item.
Item four A, proclamation for the downtown Hutchinson rod run.
All right, Jim Gruber, if I could have you come to the podium. Jim, it's always good to see you again for the 10th year of the rod run.
Anniversary year.
Anniversary year, very good. We'll give you a chance to visit with us in a minute about that, so, very good. All right, let me present the proclamation if I can. Whereas the downtown Hutchinson Rod Run and Classic Car Show will be held on Main Street in downtown Hutchinson on September 29th through October 1st, 2017. And whereas thousands of visitors and citizens of Hutchinson come downtown to enjoy the car show. And whereas we are able to expose these visitors to what our beautiful downtown has to offer. And whereas the weekend events include a show and shine, vendor demonstrations, citywide cruise, burnout event, barbecue and craft beer festival, and awards ceremony along with great music, shopping, food and drink. And whereas Hutchinson, Kansas, being centrally located and home to many great tourist attractions, including downtown Hutchinson, and blessed with its wide Main Street, is an attractive location to bring classic cars and hot rods from throughout Kansas and many other states so that all can benefit and enjoy this exciting experience. Now therefore, I, John Dave Line, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 29th through October 1st, 2017, downtown Hutchinson Rod Run and Classic Car Show Weekend in the City of Hutchinson, Kansas. So, again, Jim, thanks for your involvement and your great leadership.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. You've been so right.
I'm not going to take much time. I just want to thank, more than anything, the city, all the employees that help us throughout the year and during the rod run, they do a great job. Couldn't do it without them, and as well as all the volunteers that we have. Last year, we had, I think, a 76-count of volunteers that worked during the rod run. And that's always a great thing to put all those people together and make something come off, as well as it did last year. We had three perfect days and Jade told me that we're going to have three perfect days again this year. So, we ought to be in good shape. I did hand out a little flyer there. I just wanted to give you a little information. It's something we started last year. We call it the Kids All Wheels Show. And we use the term kids very loosely because there's no age limit on this. We have a lot of big kids that enter some bikes and trikes and different, anything that's not motorized. So, we had a good time, a good kind of preempt last year of getting it started. We've got a real good response this year. I think it's going to be bigger and better. It's a great way to utilize Memorial Hall downtown, too. Everybody enjoys that space inside. This little picture on the front here of this little pedal car, we are raffling off to. So, we want plenty of people to come town down and take advantage of that. So, that's really all I have. I really appreciate the chance to let us use the downtown and hopefully we brought some revenue to downtown and Hutchinson over the last 10 years and hopefully to keep doing it for a lot longer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim, very much.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Nope.
Everybody good?
Very popular events.
Thank you.
Well done. Alrighty, next item.
Item five, oral communications from the audience.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to offer any comments on items that are not on the agenda? Seen none, next item.
Item six, consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call roll.
Hi, Iris Day Carvallo.
Yes.
Soldner.
Yes.
Inzkeep.
Yes.
Deckent.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes, next item.
Item seven A, consider resolution authorizing public sale of general obligation refunding and improvement bonds.
Good morning, council. Angela Richard, Director of Finance. You have a resolution authorizing the sale of $6.46 million of GO bonds. 3.06 million of this is for projects that you see listed. Most of those, you authorized a resolution to allow the project at the last council meeting. In addition, we have the downtown streetscape and Monarch Meadows special assessments. 3.4 million of this is contingent upon present value savings of 3% that we would refinance. This would equal an approximate savings of $220,000, depending on interest rates. It's all contingent on the interest rate. If we do not meet that present value savings, we would not refinance. It would not be cost efficient, too. So, you also asked at the last meeting how that affects our debt loan. So, you can see there that we will make payments in our debt service fund of 4.955 million while only adding 3.06 million. The difference in this and what was budgeted to be bonded is mainly because of the Main Street project and that being delayed a year. So, that is the difference. Normally, we try to budget an amount of bonded no greater than what we are paying off. So, staff, do you have questions?
Counsel, any questions from our two Angela?
So, Angela, and I guess I'm still reading incorrectly, we're not adding 3 million to the 4.955. It's 3.06 is contained within the 4.9.
The 4.9 is what we're paying, the principal amount of prior bonds that we are paying off. And then the 3.06 is the new debt.
The new debt is the projects.
Is the projects listed there, right.
Right. So, at the year end, our debt will have reduced.
I would add too, just in terms of the debt, like right now, we're about 17 and a half percent of our total assessed valuation. We've been in the area of 15 to 17. State law caps that, I think, at 35% of your assessed valuation.
Right, 35%.
Debt load. So, we've been able to maintain a pretty steady debt level over the years and we've talked about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately $6.46 million, principal amount of general obligation refunding and improvement bond, series 2017-a of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call roll.
Hi, Iris Day Carvallo.
Yes.
Soldner.
Yes.
Inzkeep.
Yes.
Deckent.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes, next item.
Item eight A, consider special events permit and fees policy.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Merrill Dye, the Assistant City Manager. You have before you a final draft of the special events permit and fees policy. This is policy number eight. And for those in the viewing audience who have not had the opportunity to hear much discussion on this, I just want, kind of want to recap. That this policy first came out of some staff discussion and we put together a proposal that went to the city council for a study session on May 10th. Basically, we have a special events policy and a sound permit policy. And so, what we attempted to do here was to blend those two policies and to set up reasonable timelines for submitting applications for the departmental review. We wanted to provide clarity on what services are provided to the, by the city and direction for organizers on who to contact in order to organize their event. We also included what we thought was a reasonable fee structure that is intended to, excuse me, defray the city's expenses rather than recoup. Also, we wanted to be certain that we provided protection for the city on any damages and to provide the city manager discretion to amend the fees and to waive any and all fees as might be warranted. The discussion was really good on that study session. We got lots of feedback from you folks. We went back to the drawing board and made some tweaks and then brought that back again on September 12th for the study session last week. The changes there included exempting parades from the fee schedule, adding new language to address recently adopted state statute on amusement rides. We removed the attendance-based damage deposits under the special events fee schedule and we just did some general cleanup on, for clarity and flow. Linda Ojeda provided the information the mayor had requested before, showing what that financial impact would be on sponsors from 2016 and 2017 events if this, if this fee structure had applied. Also, from that study session, we went back and added a sentence under section 1A stating that any overcharges on police services would be refunded. With that, staff would recommend adoption of the policy with an effective date of January 1. And then our intent is to go out and be sure that folks that have been sponsors in the past are aware of this policy and we're ready to launch the communications and PR with our different strategies, the web, Facebook, that sort of thing. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, Mayor, you've given a good outline and we have had a thorough discussion at the city council study sessions on two occasions, so I think we've somewhat thoroughly reviewed this and had some input into the proposal here. Counsel, do you have any other questions of the proposed policy?
More comment? I'm glad that you included the piece about the refund. We talked about the prepayment and all that. And so, just having it in there in actual writing, I think, will alleviate a lot of problems should there be less services required for whatever event. So, thank you for including that.
Anybody in the audience that would have any comment on this proposed policy this morning? Yes, sir?
Morning, Mayor and Council. My name's Ron Sellers. I live at 3400 Thunderbird Drive. Just a couple of questions. You've worked on this and I just noticed it in the agenda this morning and had a chance to read it. Is there anything in this special events policy that would restrict the public to have a legal demonstration? So, if a group needed to march or have a legal political demonstration, that wouldn't take the 90-day permit or anything of that nature? Can you define how that's different than this policy?
Well, I mean, we've had a few of those types of political situations arise and typically they, the groups that are organized would contact us and the police departments involved in that and pretty well know what's allowed. But this would not, I mean, it never has even pertained to anything like that.
I wasn't suggesting it would, I just would, kind of wanted a clarification that if a group of us tonight wanted to march on some cause, we could call the mayor's office.
I don't even think we have a permitting process for that. We just, I mean, cover it with the First Amendment.
Yeah. First Amendment and then, you know, abide by local laws of, you know, not in the middle of the street and those kinds of things in public.
Thank you for that clarification. The second question that I had, and some of you know that I've been involved in the public process for many, many years and so forth, is on section two, page three, under trail restrictions. I question some of these things. Why couldn't a dance event be handled on a trail situation? At times, government gets overly restricted on things that, to me, doesn't make sense is if the young professionals wanted to have a walk and halfway through it wanted to do a dance, what's the problem? It seems like it's unnecessary. The second, that's item B. The item, the final item I'd like to question is item D. Cereal malt beverages and alcohol beverages are prohibited on all city trails. I think the use of those is allowed in other public areas of the city. No, Paul? City parks?
Not without our permission.
Not without permission.
Not at all.
Not on public property without our permission.
But with permission.
And we provide, like, for example, the sports arena, Memorial Hall, I mean, it's all prohibited without approval from the city manager.
So, if I use one of the locations at Cary Park, I rent one of those locations, no alcohol can be served there?
Without approval.
Without approval.
And we've granted approval many, many times on city property. Also, it takes a city manager's signature.
Okay, so, are you saying that item D would be without city manager's approval?
Correct, yeah. If there was an event on the trail that required or requested that based on the situation, you know, as long as proper security's in place and all the laws.
So, these are not meant to be negative guidelines, but they're meant to be general guidelines.
General guidelines.
Within reason can be changed.
And I think that was covered at kind of the preamble where it said that city manager can override any of these.
Okay, thank you for those clarifications.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sellers.
Mr. Inzkeep, you cannot have a beer while you're riding your bike. Unless you've got permission.
You wouldn't want me drinking and biking.
I'd like to try to provide an answer to Mr. Sellers' question about the dancing. I think it's, I don't have a copy of the policy in front of me, but I think the intent there is that the trails still have to remain open to the general public.
To the general public.
Yeah.
Which is mentioned, I think, in H, section H or whatever.
Let's be accessible to the general public for the duration of the scheduled event.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Other questions from those in the audience this morning? All right, seen none. Are we ready for a motion to consider this policy?
I will move to adopt revised city council policy number eight, retitled as Special Events Policy with an Effective Date of January 1, 2018.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to mention that I really hope our marketing efforts are 100% behind this, so anybody who is interested in having one of these events knows the amount of planning that'll go into it. I don't in any way want to disincent this type of, these type of fun activities, but thanks so much for all the work you put into this, Merrill. I know we required a lot of changes.
You're welcome.
All right, with that, let's call roll.
Hi, Iris Day Carvallo.
Yes.
Soldner.
Yes.
Inzkeep.
Yes.
Deckent.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes. All right, next item.
Item eight B, consider policy on naming and renaming of city parks and facilities.
Again, I'm Merrill Dye, the Assistant City Manager. This policy really made a great project for our summer intern, Manny Ultras. I probably bungled his last name there. But John had assigned this project to Manny and he took a look at policies from Lenexa, Manhattan, Overland Park, Salina and Topeka. He even looked at a policy in Denver. And what's important here is that the policy that is in front of you today primarily came from Mike Luick, our former Parks and Facilities Director. He brought this with him years ago, this policy from Winsell, Missouri. And we just kind of hung on to it, never really got to the point of, we were redrafting a lot of policies at that time and it was kind of at the bottom of the list. But it ended up being a really good policy that Manny was able to pull from. And so, you have before you, we studied this again last week at the, at the study session, hearing no objections or concerns. We corrected some typos that Nancy Soldner brought to our attention, the educator that she is.
Former English teacher.
I saw those Nancy's.
She had a red pen.
No, I did not have a red pen.
Incomplete.
Yeah, yeah.
Punctuation, yeah.
So, staff would recommend adoption of this policy and as soon as it would be adopted, it becomes effective and it will go up on the city's website along with the other city council policies.
Merrill, you might elaborate just a little bit on the previous policy which has been operating under since 2001, on the proposal must be accompanied by a petition of 250 residents.
Yes.
You might mention that.
It was a one-page policy that didn't really have any guideposts for staff and for, for the council on, you know, when is it appropriate to rename a park, for example. And so, we, you know, borrowed language again from these other policies. It, there were maybe one or two policies in that listing that we looked at and our own existing policy required a petition of 250 names. I think that's what it was.
Yeah.
Well, you know, that's easy to get 250 names behind. The feeling of the staff was that that then puts pressure on the city council as if that petition becomes a mandate and it doesn't really give you the room to make that decision based on, you know, other factors that may be relevant.
In the new policy, proposed policy, you referenced some changes in terms of how we would treat a deceased person? Do you want to explain that a little bit, please?
And Mike Luick explained this to us when he brought this policy from Winsell, that, you know, there's a lot of emotion behind when someone dies. And, you know, the feeling is to go out and memorialize their contributions to the community right away. And there's nothing wrong with that. Not all policies have that time limit. But we thought it was a good idea to kind of get past that, move, move past the mourning and the grief and, and the emotion behind that and, you know, allow that time. And it's hard to say when that is. Is that three years? Is that five years? Is that 10 years? We recommend it the three years.
You recommended three, didn't you?
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea. I really do. It's a relatively short or brief period of time in comparison and it does allow opportunity to go, be beyond the time when there is the heightened emotion and, and whatnot regarding any number of different people. I think that this is a good, much improved. The old policy really didn't, except for requiring 250 signatures, it really didn't say much. And I, and really, although it doesn't call for it, it does allow for, and I think in some respects, call for letters of support, though. So, there sure, sure could be an indication of what level of community support there is for something, but also giving guidance to that as well.
Some people view it as complicating matters. I don't. In dealing with policy language all day, every day, I think it leads to clarification, which then can help resolve any future problems. So, I like the fact that it gets in there and really addresses some of those things clearly. So, thank you.
A question, Merrill, and I raised it in the study session. How would, positively, negatively, or maybe no, no difference at all? We recently changed the name of Ashmead Park to Southwest Bricktown. Of course, they, the requirement was to obtain 250 signatures. If this had been in effect, how would that have changed or altered or made it less difficult, more difficult, different?
I don't think it would have changed that ever, really.
No, I don't believe so. I think the issue is, you know, some parks have a, by deed or, you know, by subdivision, it's the, you know.
Named something.
Named it and can't really be changed. This one was a case of, I think we had to look back to, well, number one, it was misspelled on the sign for a lot of years.
Wonderful.
And then we had to figure out what it was. And so, there wasn't any, you know, deed restrictions or anything like that. So, I don't think this would affect that possibility at all, so.
Did we find that it was a tree?
It was a tree.
Trees, yeah. But like, you know, Farmington Park is.
And I doubt there's one still there.
Farmington is dedicated by subdivision and, you know, that wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to change that, I'm assuming, without going through a lot of process.
Well, we underscore the importance of clarity.
Absolutely.
That's what we're striving for here.
With that, I would move to adopt the revised city council policy number 26, retitled as Policy on Naming/Renaming of City Parks and Facilities.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call roll.
Hi, Iris Day Carvallo.
Yes.
Soldner.
Yes.
Inzkeep.
Yes.
Deckent.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes. All right, next item.
Item eight C, consider River Otter Exhibit Pool Construction.
Good morning. I'm Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. This item is for the construction of just a pool at the River Otter exhibit, not the entire exhibit.
At last.
We're making progress, yeah. So, if you remember, city, we are acting as the general contractor for this project as a way to save some costs. If you haven't been to the zoo lately, we are under construction. If you haven't been to the zoo lately, we are under construction. The little purple polygon there shows kind of the location of where the exhibit's being built, just beyond the dino dig in the aviary. So that's the general location. In case you forgot how cute these guys are. Otters, prior to 2014, we did have otters at the zoo. They're now, or the beavers are now in their exhibit. These guys are really crafty, and they were able to find ways to get out. We were constantly finding them in the park and other places they weren't supposed to be, so we did take them off exhibit 2014. This is another view of that exhibit that now is the beaver exhibit. So this is an early rendering of the new exhibit, just to give you a location. This is the dino dig, and then this is the aviary here. And so this is all new exhibit. This is the pond. Main exhibit's here. You can see there's a lot of water in the exhibit. There is some underwater viewing in this section here. Here's another view, and this is, this is an early on, so it's changed slightly, but the idea is still very similar to this. There will be some underwater viewing, and then one waterfall, and then this side actually will act more as a slide. This drawing is off the actual construction documents. This is much more realistic to what we're building. Again, you can see it's kind of a stream with a slide on this side and a waterfall on this side. The maximum depth's around four feet, and then these three sections here are glass panels, so you'll see underwater viewing there. One thing that's unique about this exhibit that's different than a lot of River Otter exhibits, is most River Otter exhibits are basically aquariums. This exhibit really maximizes the space or the amount of kind of shoreline, I guess, for better words. That's where the otters really like to hang out, at the edge of the water and land, so it'll be a little unique amongst River Otter exhibits. So we did do an RFP just for the construction of the pool itself. That's one skill that my staff does not have as far as, you know, designing the filtration system, and it's a very labor-intensive, very specialized concrete work. We received two bids, one's from Pools Plus from here in Hutch, and the other one was Big Bamboo Studios from Nebraska, extremely competitive in price, as you can see there. We did meet with both, Pools Plus, and then we talked with Big Bamboo Studios a couple times on the phone. It felt like they both really had a good understanding of what our expectations were, really feel that both can deliver a really quality product. And because Pools Plus is a low bid and because they're local, we are recommending proceeding with Pools Plus, so.
Really pleased to see that we have a local vendor who's going to be able to do that.
Yeah, I was worried that the local guys wouldn't, because it's a little unique, because it's, you know, natural looking, you know, there's going to be some faux stones, the concrete's going to be colored to look more like mud or river bottom, you know, not a typical backyard pool. So we're a little concerned on whether some of the local companies would be willing to take on that challenge, and Pools Plus did step up, and I have confidence in that.
Justin, to you and to Ryan, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, just the great strides that the community has made in recent years in terms of the support of the city council and the staff in continually improving our zoo. It's a great asset. It's one of the first or only free zoos which affords the opportunity of the citizens of Hutchinson to enjoy that, and it gets a tremendous amount of views. So continue with your good work, and you're making some great strides with it.
Thank you.
Will it just house the otters?
Yes.
Okay. I assumed as much, but I didn't know if they could cohabitate with anybody else. Do they get along with others?
Play well with others.
As cute as they are, they are little predators.
Are they? Fair enough.
So we're not going to be putting fish or anything like that?
You know, we might throw an enrichment activity. I mean, Ryan could speak to that, but I have seen where, you know, they'll put small shad or something in as an enrichment for them to chase.
Yeah, and eat.
They will be lunch if there's.
Yeah, no, I know that.
All right, any further questions of Justin?
You have, you do know how to make this a secure facility?
Yes.
From the inside to going out?
Yeah. Concrete walls and no 90, what they were doing before is we had 90-degree angles, and they're actually able to wedge themselves in there.
And they were able to crawl up.
Much wider angles in their concrete, and they'll be finished smooth. So yeah, there's no place for them to.
Sneaky.
To wedge themselves.
Resourceful little characters, huh?
They are very, very intelligent, yes.
But when it's all finished, make sure you invite former mayor Pro to the.
That's right.
This was, this is one of her pet peeves.
Well, but you know, that ended up being a positive, because it really encouraged the board to step up and get private investment.
Oh, yeah.
So who knew we would be able to do this with private investment? Yeah, that's great.
Because it was on the bubble years and years ago for Hutchinson, so you want to continue having this, so.
Well, I would move to approve the proposal submitted by Pools Plus for the construction of the River Otter Exhibit Pool for an amount not to exceed $80,497.39 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Motion and a second. Please call roll.
Hi, Rose DeCarvallo.
Yes.
Soldner.
Yes.
Inskeep.
Yes.
Deckent.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes. All right, next item.
Item 8D, Consider Design Services for Zoo Education Building.
Good morning again. So this is a second item pertaining to the zoo this morning. This is for construction documents, primarily for the education building, which is in the 2018 budget. We also threw in there a second project as well. So the overall budget for this is $25,000 just for the design services. As you can see, the first project is construction documents for an education building, approximately 30 feet by 70 feet, really a relatively simple building, you know, one large room that'll serve as a multi-purpose classroom space, and then, you know, a single office, some restrooms, and then some storage. This building will also house all of our education animals, so it's any animal that leaves the site, leaves the zoo, and those animals really need to be kept separate from our regular zoo collection for disease purposes, so this will give them their own off-exhibit home that we can take and take them off-site when needed. The second part of this project is kind of the next phase, kind of the next vision for the zoo. You know, recently, we took out a playground structure, a small climbing structure. We refer to it as a spider web, and that kind of got some wheels, some ideas going that, you know, we'd like to replace that, that interactive feature of the zoo. So we're hoping that our next improvement to the zoo will be a playground, an interactive splash river, so think of a splash pad that's more shallow, that's kind of flowing water, maybe looks more like a river, and then an open-air pavilion for events, those sorts of things. So this is very early on in the planning phase. We do have some money budgeted in 2019 in the CIP for a playground, but really, we just kind of wanted to flush out some of these ideas. What could this space look like? You know, how much is it going to cost? What's the funding going to be, some of those things? So this design service are those two projects wrapped in one. For the location of the two, the education building is this rectangle up here that'll be kind of between the gift shop and the wild care center, the rehab building, in that big open lawn area. Part of the reason for this is we can allow access right to the parking lot, to a sidewalk, and bring school groups right in to the building. Can also bring our education animals right out without taking them through the zoo. You know, this building could be rotated 90 degrees. We're not 100% sure, but we know we like that general location. As far as the Splash River Playground and Pavilion, we're talking down here along the pond, kind of beyond the River Otter Exhibit. So this in blue is the River Otter Exhibit, so, you know, the next to it, then you'd like to see some sort of playground, water feature, and then kind of towards the end of what used to be the parking lot, then would be an open-air pavilion. Our long-term goal is to, you know, move some of our collection, or move the public so we can see some of our collection around the edge of the pond, primarily a bison. You know, we've got this really great animal, very hard to see right now. So our goal is to get people closer to the bison. We could possibly then move some of our other hoof socks, some of the deer, the antelope, maybe along the pond over here as well, so have them in a more natural setting, so. But again, this component really is just conceptual at this point, you know, trying to see what, you know, is there phasing involved? Is this a three-phase project? And, you know, is it a 50-50 split? Is it purely privately funded, those sorts of things? So we sent out an RFQ, and we received four responses, BG Consultants, WDM, Mann and Company, and Landmark. Again, the budget was set at $25,000, so they all knew how much money they had to spend. So when we looked at these, we really looked at how did they divide that $25,000 up amongst the two projects? We looked at, do they understand the project and the proposal? Did they indicate they knew what they were getting into? And then kind of the last thing was, did they demonstrate projects of similar nature in their proposal? I'll start with Landmark. You know, Landmark, they were pretty high on the design for the building, didn't think they would have anything left. So really, they didn't even make a complete proposal, so we really did not consider Landmark. Mann and Company, they had a very strong proposal. Our concern here was that there just wasn't quite enough dollars in the conceptual side. Felt like they were a little high on the design for the building. The building's only a $200,000 building, you know, so we're talking, you know, well over 10% design fee, to me was just a little high. WDM had probably, from the finance side, had the best price. Our concern with them, they put very little effort into the proposal, and then every example they gave was, you know, the Tiger Exhibit in Wichita for 1.6 million or whatever it was. They're all these huge, huge projects. They're a big firm, they do lots of zoo exhibits, lots of big exhibits, so we just weren't sure how much attention we'd get from them.
And Justin, are those amounts incorrect on there? Did it add up to 25, the actual amount?
It did.
Okay.
Because that ends in 50, yeah, 30 and 20.
I mean, it's not a big deal, it's just.
It does, yeah. Well, they were set at 50, yeah. That must be a typo on my part. I have my head. And then BG Consultants, and we do have two representatives from BG here today, and I've got Manhattan slash Hutchinson on here. The Architecture Division for BG is out of Manhattan, but they do have a local office as well. So they're at $20,000 for the design piece, and then $5,000 for the conceptual. I thought that was a pretty good split, you know, again, 10% on the high end for design services, but against a small budget, so your percentage generally goes up a little bit. So I do have a few projects that BG did submit as equivalent. So this is in Parsons, Kansas, just a nice amphitheater, a nice shelter, kind of open-air shelter. And the reason I included this, it's a much larger building than what we're looking at for the education building, but general construction, you know, very simple metal-sided building, little bit of stone to dress it up a little bit. So something along those lines is what we're looking at for the education building, just not near as big. Not near, you know, we're not going to have granite countertops and that kind of stuff finished out with this.
Good.
And then they are using, are proposing to use Confluence Landscape Architects. They're a multi-site location. I believe they'll be using the Kansas City office, and here's a couple designs they've done that are zoo-related. I really, really wanted to point this one out. This is really what we had in mind for that Splash River. You can see there's this water feature that kind of comes down along landscaping, and they're encouraging kids to get in and play in that, so. This is most likely treated water, just like a splash pad would be, but it's got a much more natural feel, so.
Cool.
So with that, I'll stand for any questions, but again, we are recommending BG Consultants for this project, or these two projects, I guess.
Justin, on the education building, what is your time schedule for it to be built out?
You know, we're hoping, we're hoping we can get construction documents done this fall and winter, and then we'd be looking to start construction in early spring.
Early spring, late winter, early spring, yeah.
It's in the 18 budget, but, you know, so we'll start as soon as we can in 18, so.
On the education?
On the education building, yeah. The other piece, we're, yeah, we'll see more of that down the road in CIP sessions and things, so.
So Justin, when we, when we get the concepts back, will that include any numbers on the impact to the operational budget of the zoo as far as the splash pad? And I know there's some maintenance associated with that. I mean, I think it's a great idea, and I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I'm wondering how that's going to impact the budget.
But it's a great point, and part of the reason why, why we want our next phase to be more of a playground splash pad as opposed to another animal, is the animal takes a lot more labor to maintain on a daily basis. And so we wanted something that will encourage people to stay longer at the zoo without driving up our operating cost.
Great.
There will be cost associated with, you know, maintaining the playgrounds and whatever is built there, but not like adding an additional zookeeper to add a, you know, a wolf exhibit or whatever it would be. So there is some thought to why we're doing this as opposed to saying, in some of the other master plans, it did show just exhibit after exhibit, kind of working your way around the pond. We think this is a much more realistic use of that space and a much more logical use, so.
Agreed.
Great question, great answer.
Yeah.
Well, it's like, it's like he knew it was coming.
Yeah, I'm telling you.
I stole most of that response from Ryan Van Zambe.
Ah, very good, yeah.
What's the, what's the funding source for the education building? Is that totally city budget, or did I hear you talk about?
It's in the 2018 budget, and it'll be bonded. And we are, we have had conversations with the friends of the zoo as far as supplying things like tables and chairs and some of the other things that go inside the building. You know, I think they are more than happy to participate.
Would that be then available for rent?
Yes.
Let's see.
Yeah, and the idea is that this room is really a multi-purpose space, so a traveling exhibit we can maybe house in there, and just our regular day-in, day-out programs, summer camps, birthday parties. You know, fundraising events at the zoo, you know, the Wine in the Wild, which is coming up. You know, we anticipate there'll be some glass doors that we can open up, so the building's kind of inside-outside type space as well, so.
I've even attended continuing education classes at the zoo. It's been a while, but in the main building, down in the basement area.
Down in the basement, yeah.
Yeah, so a lot of opportunity.
Okay. Justin, thank you. Any other questions of Justin? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the contract for design services with BG Consultants for design services for the Hutchinson Zoo in an amount not to exceed $25,000 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Do we, do we want to hear from BG? Any comments that you guys would want to add or make?
Well, I think, I think you probably have all seen my.
I can't hear you on TV.
Just when you thought you were going to escape.
I'm not going to say anything. I'm Sid Arpin, 2801 Tartan Trail. I've been in the community for quite a while and I know most of the faces here, but there is, I did want to introduce the architect that would be responsible for overseeing this project, and that would be Clint Hitt. And Clint's from Norwich, Kansas, so he's familiar sort of with the area, and let him say a word or two.
Yeah, so we're very excited for the opportunity to continue to work with this community, with Hutchinson. Quite frankly, I think the plans that the city has, that Ryan put together with this, with not just this education building, but with the master plan, integrating place-based that really pulls the community to the zoo is going to be fantastic. We're excited to be a part of that process, and our intent is to help capture that vision that's anticipated, not just for the education building, but also for the next step, the next step that continues to extend the longevity and impact of that zoo. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be of service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Looking forward to working with you.
All right, with that, we have a motion and a second. Please call roll.
Hi, Rose DeCarvallo.
Yes.
Soldner.
Yes.
Inskeep.
Yes.
Deckent.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes. Next item.
Item 8E, Consider Walnut and Sherman Parking Lot Bid Results.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name's Bruce Colley. I'm Director of Engineering for the City of Hutchinson. What I have before you today is a project. Uh, what I have before you today is, is a project that was initiated by, uh, Mr. Site Nader, uh, from the Downtown Development, and, um, it's a, uh, integral parking lot that is located downtown, uh, off of, uh, Sherman and Walnut, uh, to kind of bring some image to mind, uh, there's a parking lot on the north side of Sherman, and there's a parking lot on the south side. This is the parking lot on the north side. And, uh, it, it needed to be improved and, and, uh, this project really provides an improvement to the downtown Main Street area, uh, to enhance the positive experience, I believe, for not only the business owners, but residents and, and visitors to enjoy the downtown, uh, Hutchinson experiences. Um, the project is a rehabilitation of an existing lot, um, and, uh, parking, we, we've reversed, uh, it was actually done by a sub-consultant, we did not do this in-house. Parking was revised slightly as far as the traffic flow. Uh, we were able to pick up, uh, as I recall, two spaces, uh, that we also picked up, uh, two additional handicap spaces in this parking lot, and, um, it, it has a con, uh, total, if memory serves me correctly, of sixty-two spaces. Um, funding will be via a bond issue. We, uh, took on the, the task of, of, of advertising this project, uh, and trying to get it out in a timely manner. Construction, uh, just so you know, uh, the schedule is by the end of October this year.
Oh, wow.
And, um, so it'll be a project that we'll see immediate, uh, results and, and good results on. Uh, we did advertise, uh, there were, there were two bidders, uh, on the project, APAC, uh, Shears, uh, here locally, and then Prairie Land Works. Uh, if you're unfamiliar with Prairie Land Works, they're located up in, um, McPherson, and they've, uh, made numerous inquiries to, to my department, to me personally, about projects in, in Hutchinson. Uh, the bids came out relatively close and, and, um, within, within the budget that was anticipated. APAC was the low bid at, at seventy-six thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and thirteen cents. Uh, Prairie Land Works' bid was eighty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred, eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. And, uh, based on, on the, the review of, of the bids, again, this is going to be funded by a bond issue, uh, our staff recommends, uh, the bid submitted by APAC Shears, uh, in the amount of seventy-six thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and thirteen cents, uh, subject to compliance with all legal requirements, uh, to be approved and the mayor be authorized to sign, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Bruce, I've got two questions.
Yes, sir.
One deals very surprising to most people, but how about streetlights? Is that in the scope of the project?
It is not.
And can you tell me why?
Cannot tell you why other than the fact that it was, the existing parking lot does not have streetlights, but, uh, it could certainly be added to the project.
There's one wooden pole in the middle, as I recall, on the streetlight.
Right, that pole is to be removed.
That pole is to be removed.
Yes, sir.
There would not be any street, any...
No, no.
And you know, John, I...
It should be replaced by a...
I know this, I know this is your, your pet thing, but that is a very good point. I park there for Fox events. Yeah.
Yeah.
And of course, part of that orientation was the utilization of that, particularly for Fox Theater events and evenings and so on.
Yes, sir.
I'm just raising that question, uh, whether or not we wanna rethink, um, an amendment to, or how we could incorporate some form of lighting into that parking lot.
Cause it's gonna be a lot more expensive to do it later.
That could be done very easily, um, with the stalls coming up, and if you had a stall right here to go ahead and put a parking lot light in that stall area. And, uh, it would not be like some of our other lights, we'd wanna go ahead and have a protective coating, whether it be concrete or whatever, uh, to come up, and, uh, we could actually go ahead and, and have, uh, for, for cost savings, have our, uh, traffic department, uh, go ahead and install, uh, the wires, the conduit, et cetera, for those, uh, those, those lights. And, and I, I think that you've got a very good point, because all the trees that are in the center of that parking lot...
Yes.
...are intended to be removed.
They're intended to be removed.
The trees on the outside, which would be on the Sherman Street side, are intended to stay, so that canopy coverage lends credence in my mind to what you're talking about, from a safety standpoint.
So based on this bid proposal in terms of modifying that to add streetlight program into the parking lot, how would we go about doing that?
It would be an amendment.
Would we have to rebid this, or what?
No, it'd be an amendment to the contract. It's, it's going to be a minor amendment, it'll be less than ten percent.
Well, I for one am a, certainly a strong proponent of that, and I, I hope we could reconsider adding appropriate street lighting to the project.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
So would we table this item, or would we go ahead and vote on it?
No, I think just... Go ahead and do it, and just come back with it. Based on what's presented with the addition, additional costs, that some of that's gonna be borne internally, um, I'm not sure how much the contractor would actually do, but, um...
Right.
Don't believe it'd be a overwhelming amount that we wouldn't be able to handle.
Well, in your best guess, how many lights would it require to properly illuminate that parking lot if placed strategically, or, I, I know we're putting you on the spot here a little bit, but I would, I would say four, four.
Okay, I, I...
And we can, we can use, we can use the, uh, uh, the newest standard of the LED lights, it provides much better illumination.
Yeah.
Uh, what, what I'll do is I'll get together with Steve Garza and Traffic and to do the luminaires, uh, the diagram that comes down, and then based on that, we can lay that, the parking lot underneath the luminaires and determine the actual number and the placement of those lights.
Okay, cause don't we have some loft apartments? I mean, I'm thinking, we wanna make sure that the, if there are residents living, and, and I'm thinking of Alice Jane, um, that street lighting does not impact them, although I'm with John, definitely that we have to have lighting.
Yes.
So I mean, there's, we gotta make sure we balance that.
I'm trying to recall if there's windows on that alley side of that building.
I don't know, there's not, okay, good.
I remember, I think, the, the middle building there are windows, but the, uh...
The Alice Jane's?
Oh, right, yeah, there was some lookout windows, yeah.
Okay, good.
I don't think...
Okay, so it would not be an issue? Okay, good.
With the, with the fixture units, you can go ahead and take that, that, the light, luminaires to shoot down...
Make sure it goes down, not out.
And have that surrounding fixture as opposed to the...
Okay.
The whiteout, but I will consider that, that's a very good point.
I appreciate your openness to that, uh, I, I don't wanna forget this item, uh, when we, if and when we approve this this morning, but the other is, tell me, you've had a little experience in terms of parking lots and landscape ordinance, uh, how would the landscape ordinance, uh, be impacted by the, or how would, how would it impact this parking lot?
With, with the savior of, of the trees in the perimeter, that's, that's met the landscape. Meter exceed, probably, yeah. It meets it, yes, sir, it does.
That's all I needed to know.
Yes, sir.
Bruce, the, you've got that high elevation, I don't know if that's for drainage, is that gonna be altered?
It is not going to be altered, and the high elevation that you're thinking of, if I, if, if I've got my bearings straight, is, would be on the northwest corner, and there is...
Yes.
There is, uh, um, major sidewalk construction to be able to go ahead and get handicap people down there.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the, uh, uh, primary component of the design concept, uh, that was addressed, so that, that high, that rise in the, in the land will, will go ahead and remain, however, we have been able to, uh, ha, to accommodate handicap as well as pedestrians.
Okay, great. I always wondered the reasoning for that, but I assume it's drainage related, but...
It is drainage related.
But it is high.
Yes, of all the places in Hutch, that's, we've got a hill right there.
And there will be appropriate railings along that pedestrian?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that'll be a lot, that'll be a much-needed improvement, so, yeah, I always pa, parked there for the Fox events and something and such.
Speaking of another parking lot, the one on Main Street across from Westlake, tell me about the status of the, it's been paved.
Yes.
But tell me about the, and I have driven by it, uh, the, the street lighting there, or the, the lighting in the park there.
That is in our to-do list with traffic. Traffic has been just uncovered with, with work, and, uh, as a matter of fact, as I was sitting here this morning, uh, one of my notes just so happens to be, uh, let me see here, I've got school projects that I need, need to meet with Mr. Dirdoff about item number C, uh, and I called it Smith's Parking Lots.
Okay, Smith's Parking Lots.
Yeah, and, and Steve Garza and Adam Wooton are, are fully aware of that. Uh, presently, they've, they've had to take care of, of a, of an accident that happened at, at Fourth and Adams that should be completed today. Their next task is to go over to Fourth and K-61. Uh, they finished up the Twentieth and Main, uh, signals, uh, after the, uh, Fourth and K-61 project. I've got them slotted to move in to request by the school district, and so we're, we're...
It's on your radar.
It's, it's, it's on the radar, yes, sir, it sure is.
It's not falling through the cracks.
No. Yes.
All right, Council, do you have any other questions of, of Bruce?
And I don't know if it's for Bruce or for John or someone else, but, uh, drawing upon my limited memory, the building next to the Hutch wreck, uh, which falls along that alley that leads to the parking lot discussion, what, what were we doing with that? Were we tearing it down, if memory serves you, or no?
No, there, there's still been, there was discussion about that.
There was talk of it, thank you.
Tearing that down and creating a...
Kind of a pocket park.
Corridor. But we've, we've not got to a budget component on that. Uh, I think there's a little bit of apprehension about taking the building down, what happens to the wall next to it.
And takes the wall down, yeah, I remember that, yeah.
So that's still a, you know, a thought and idea out there that we haven't...
And that's not a safety issue, I mean, I've driven down the alley, I've seen there's bricks and stuff down there occasionally or whatever, that's not an issue, is, not in jeopardy of coming down on someone, is it?
I think it was one of those conversations that if we're gonna tear the building down, let's have a plan, um, before we do that.
In place to do so.
Okay, what are we gonna do with the space once the building's down and, and, but there is, uh, a lot of question about, you know, what, what happens when that building comes down, and, you know, what's next to it, and what, what we're dealing with there, so.
Well, it would really open up that alleyway if, in fact, that was gonna become a corridor towards the Fox.
Yeah.
That would, that would open up a lot of room as well.
Ultimately, that's the plan, and we really need to figure that out, particularly with this improvement, that just, is one next, one step forward on that.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks for saving the trees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm a tree lover myself, and maybe it's good anyways.
Some of the trees caused, some of the trees caused some of the damage to why I fixed the parking lot, so.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Totally told, yeah.
All right, Council, uh, would we consider a motion with the suggested amendment? And would somebody like to offer that motion?
I'm trying to figure out how to phrase it.
I'll do it, but I, I'll need maybe a little help with the structure. Uh, I would move to approve awarding the project to APAC Kansas Inc., Shears Division, in the amount of seventy-six thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and thirteen cents, subject to compliance with all legal requirements and contingent upon lighting, is that the proper verbiage?
Or the addition of...
I would just say the addition of appropriate lighting.
Addition of appropriate lighting to the project, uh, and then I would...
Would it still hold?
I'll leave that to their determination.
Wooden hose.
They'll be still.
Uh, and authorize the mayor to sign any documents related to the project. I hope they got it.
Second.
Good job. All right. If that meets the intent.
Yeah.
All right, do we have a second to the...
I'll, I'll second.
All right, a motion and a second, any further discussion? Uh, Jim, do you have any comments on this at all?
Just thank you very much, that's a tremendous addition to the project. You will see a series of CIP projects...
Hold up, please.
Jim Site Nader, Downtown Development, uh, thank you for this tremendous addition to the lot. It will, I think, make people feel a lot better about, uh, using it for the Foxes. I, like Jade, find that to be the most, uh, easily readily accessible parking, and you're just a half a block away from the theater. Uh, you will see a series of CIP requests over the next few years, uh, addressing the building and making that more of a green space, uh, kind of a park thing, but the partial wall between the Hutch wreck building and that building is, needs to be determined, just what, you know, that kind of cost would be. And then, excuse me, and then the south parking lot, we'd like to see that little piece finished, uh, in two years, uh, so that they would, you know, mirror each other, and that gives a tremendous amount of parking in the area, uh, between the two parking lots and the on-street parking, and then a third parking lot that's about a block away, there's a couple hundred parking spaces right there in that area, so making that all work and maybe adding a few streetlights along Walnut Street on that, uh, west side would make a real nice walkable corridor to the parking and then the connection between Memorial Hall and the Fox Theater. So, over the next couple, three years, we'd like to see those projects, uh, come on board and add some more, uh, nice amenities to the downtown area.
Question I have, and it has actually got to do with this, will this maintain the wagon with the flowers?
Well, that's a great, uh, project that the Richardson's family, I think they have some master gardeners and some folks that do that, but they do a tremendous job.
It's very attractive, so...
Our, our landscaping in downtown gets complimented all the times, and my hat's off to Justin and his crew and, uh, the local people, and then that inspires others to do really great things like that.
Yeah, and, and Kansas Glass over here on, what is that, Second? They have some kind of little outdoor area back there that has flowers, and I just noticed that the other day.
Yeah.
And it's also a very attractive little inset into the downtown area.
All of the, uh, public investment over time has really driven a lot of quiet, private investment that you don't really think about until you just see the differences and things like that, but...
Yeah.
Signage, painting, awnings coming off, buildings going back to their original shape, uh, the old Salvation Army building on Sherman Street, the Minners did a wonderful job with flowers and bought a piece of the, uh, artwork from the Sculpture Walk, and so you, you do see a, a tremendous amount of private investment that's not easily number assessed to, but, uh, really makes a big difference in the overall look of downtown.
And I, I'll just add that I really hope we can make that green space happen by Hutch wreck. If there's one thing that all this flooding has taught cities, it's that we should be mindful of increasing our impervious area without offsetting it with a little bit of green space when possible.
Yeah, and the original, uh, intent of buying that building way back in nineteen ninety-eight, it was the very first CIP project I was part of, and that was our goal, was to get that building down and add some more parking or the, uh, you know, the gateway towards the parking for the Fox, and, uh, now, thanks to you, we're able to, to make that work, and so it will be, it'll be a tremendous, uh, piece, and now with residents in the Wiley Building and all of that, there's more and more need for those kinds of, uh, green spaces in, in downtown.
Thank you, Bruce, I appreciate it very much. Uh, listen, you need a roll, uh, roll call, don't we?
Correct. Tyros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes, all right, next item.
Item 8F, consider continuation of FAA commercial airport certification.
Good morning, Mayor and Counsel. I am Peter Miller here, Friendly Hutcheson Airport Manager. Um, I was gonna, well, I'm still going to speak to you about our, our airport certification standard, but I also wanted to mention why we've got just a minute. At 9:00 AM this morning, or 1400 Zulu, we opened up our brand-new runway to the public at the airport. So after 14 months, we still have another month left to, to finish everything up, but our brand-new seven-and-a-half million dollar runway is open to the public, so we made it.
Plus, we don't get to use Zulu time enough, in my opinion.
Right, well, we should do everything in Zulu. Exactly. But, so anyway, I was going to, in your packet, there should be a memo in there describing a little bit about our Part 139 Commercial Operating Certificate. And basically, I want to give you a quick little description here. Our Part 139 Operating Certificate is a set of FAA-mandated commercial airport standards. These are standards that airports that have commercial service are required to meet. And so when I say "commercial service," anybody that can contact a ticket agent, buy a ticket to get on an airline, those are considered commercial, commercial airports. Dallas, Atlanta, Wichita, Manhattan, Kansas, Garden City, Salina, those are all commercial airports, and they are required to meet these federal standards for, for airports. These standards, they cover, gosh, they cover everything, pretty much, as far as airports go. Runway, taxiways, lighting systems, paint, airfield condition reporting, record-keeping, all the airport staff are required to train on 13 different aspects of airport environment and safety. I mean, drivers' training, wildlife control, line service, fueling agents, all airports that have commercial service, their staff have to meet all of these, all of these standards. Also, a big part of the commercial airport standards are ARF response. That's Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting. If you are a commercial airport, you have to have dedicated ARF response that's familiar with the type of aircraft that, that use that airport, passenger-carrying aircraft. Hutcheson has been a 139 airport since they came up with the 139 airport back in the mid-'90s. There was airline service at Hutcheson through 1999, and for various reasons, essential air service and the four-lane going to Wichita, it suddenly became much easier and much cheaper for folks in Salina to, to, to hop on airlines in Wichita. So the ridership out of the Hutcheson Airport kind of declined. You couldn't, you couldn't run an airline with only two or three people flying a week out of the airline, so the airlines pulled out. However, we still maintained those standards for commercial airports, even though there were no airlines there. In 2004, the FAA got very serious about these standards, and they completely rewrote everything and required all commercial airports to continue to maintain those standards if they wanted to, if they chose to, or if you had airlines, you had to. And they added, oh, two or three dozen more aspects. Now TSA was involved, NSA was involved, perimeter fencing, they got very serious about wildlife control. All 139 airports had to have wildlife management plans and wildlife mitigation techniques, security patrols. It, it got pretty, got pretty serious in 2004. Yet, we continued to maintain it because that had just kind of always been the standard that, that we had done, even though there really was no, no chance of an airline, you know, coming back in. Nobody was actively seeking airlines to, to operate in and out of Hutcheson. So over the last several years, I, I became airport manager in 2009 and inherited, I don't want to call it a mess, but things were challenging out there for a little bit. The 2008 inspection, they threatened to pull that certificate from us if we weren't able to turn the corner and address a lot of these issues that weren't being addressed out there. So it took me a few years to do it, but we managed to actually get a no discrepancies report in 2011, which is the FAA equivalent of, "You're perfect. We couldn't find anything wrong with the airport." We did that again in 2014. In 2015 and 2016, we got some new inspectors and, and they looked at things a little bit differently perhaps than some of the, some of the other inspectors that we had, and they started finding some issues here and there. So basically, kind of what I'm getting at is those, those standards are becoming more and more difficult to, to maintain and to, to meet those standards. In particular, they are, look, they look very hard now at paint. I know, painting on airports, it's, it's a big deal, and everything needs to be repainted between every two and three years. Every time we paint something out there, it's forty and fifty thousand dollars. Hutcheson Airport's big, we've got three runways, we've got nine approaches, you know, six taxiways, aprons, everything has to be painted. We spend a considerable amount of time and a considerable amount of money keeping the paint on the airfield, meeting, meeting the FAA requirements. And to make things even more challenging, they change those requirements about every two years and come up with a better way to paint. So they make us remove our old paint, put it down a different way, and, and change things around. Anyway, I guess my point is, it's challenging, and we're spending a considerable amount of time just meeting the painting standards for, for a commercial airport. So they've adopted a "two strikes and you're out" inspection regiment. What that basically means, if you get written up two consecutive years for the same type of issue, in this case, paint, that the third year, they can instill, or they can put civil penalties and temporarily suspend your certificate and say, you're, obviously, you're not meeting the painting, you know, you've had paint problems for the last two years, you're not going to have paint problems anymore because we're going to take your certificate. We're at, we're at strike two right now, because 2015 and 2016, I wasn't able to get all the paint done that, that we needed to get done for various reasons. So no, and we, we did do a lot of painting this year, too. We've got two taxiways repainted, one new runway repainted, but we still have our primary runway that still needs painting. That's a hundred thousand dollar project that I wasn't able to get worked in this year. So this is more of a personal issue. I'm uncomfortable going into my next inspection knowing that I don't meet the paint requirements for the runway. The paint on the runway is not bad, it just doesn't meet the, the reflectivity that the FAA feels a commercial airport needs to have. So due to some of the conversations we had earlier this year with the 2018 budget and, and the operation budget cuts and some reserve account budgets and the things that kind of got hit here and there, I started looking at my budget and trying to determine where I could come up with some different cuts. That brought me to the point, well, do we really need to keep maintaining this commercial certificate? We're not, we have no commercial service, but we've been maintaining these standards since the mid-'90s. So I looked at a lot of different, a lot of different aspects, the financial impacts, how it affects operations. So just to cover some of those real quick, it's, what I was worried about was the biggest change would be the ARF response, Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting. Talking with, with Chief Beers, he feels, along with the rest of the staff and myself, really nothing would change without that federal requirement. They would still have trained ARF response that would be familiar with the aircraft. They would still do airport familiarizations, they would still check radios. Really, nothing would change as far as emergency response to the airport. FAA Airports Division, those are the money people up in Kansas City. They're the ones that say, yes, you can go with this project and we'll pay for 90% of it. In conversations with them, us dropping our certificate would not affect that at all. We are still get our discretionary funding and our entitlement funding in the grant money. The only part it would potentially affect is if we ask for money for a new ARF truck or if we ask for money for a snow and ice control equipment. That's not going to rank as high if you're a non-commercial airport. I don't think there's any, any intention of us ever asking for snow and ice control equipment from the FAA anyway. KDOT Aviation, if we are no longer a commercial service, FAA-inspected airport, we now become a 50-10 airport in the state of Kansas. Basically, that means every three years, the state of Kansas shows up and they kind of walk around on the airport. It's a non-regulatory inspection. They kind of look at things, they make suggestions, hey, you might want to paint this, you might want to, you know, replace these lights, whatever it is they come up with. All of the non-139 airports in the state of Kansas, and there's 128 of them, are 50-10 airports with the state, so really not a whole lot would change there. I've got a, I've got a good relationship with the state, state guys, too, so we'll be okay. Air Traffic Control, in talking with the Air Traffic Control Manager, there's really no operational change as far as he's concerned. All of the agreements and the operations and the processes we have in place are dictated through letters of agreement and memorandums of understanding of how we operate on the airfield. Really has nothing to do with the Part 139 certificate. That would continue on exactly how it's always been. We would open and close runways just like we always have based on what it is the control tower needs. The, the Airport Advisory Committee, they were in favor of it, of us voluntarily returning the Part 139 certificate for no other reason than it would give me more time to do some more of the things out there that, that aren't getting done. My staff and I spend, like I said, a considerable amount of time throughout the year and each week trying to maintain these standards, making sure the paperwork's in place, going through all the training requirements. Without that certificate in place, a lot of that, we no longer have to do. You know, I'll, I'll touch on what we're still going to do if we end up returning this. And so they were, they were happy that I can plan more airshows and get more fly-ins and, you know, do that kind of stuff, because I'd have a little more time to do that sort of stuff. And of course, the tenants, a couple of the comments came back from the tenants, what's a 139 and why didn't we do this 10 years ago? So it doesn't really affect the tenants that much, that much either. The biggest effect would be the fueling system inspections that we do, which we would continue to do anyway, just as a courtesy to our, our fueling, and they're just best practices, honestly. So as far as the financial impact goes of, of dropping this certification, the, the biggest one that was going to potentially affect us was our ARF truck. Shrek is almost 30 years old, and that's our dedicated ARF truck. Yeah, his, his name's Shrek. It's a big green truck.
It's great.
That truck is, is 30 years old now, and we're required to maintain that truck as the primary response to any type of aircraft incidents at the airfield. Without the 139, we don't need a dedicated ARF truck. Responses can be just the regular fire trucks that the city has can, based on what it is we feel that the response needs to be. That ARF truck, like I said, is 30 years old and is becoming a, a maintenance headache. It, it's harder to get parts for it. So in the next year or two, we were going to be considering purchasing either a new or used ARF truck to replace Shrek. I, I don't need to talk to you guys, there's nothing cheap about fire trucks. So that was potentially anywhere from 200 to 700,000 dollar, you know, piece of equipment that we would have to get to maintain the 139. So that also means that we don't have to do live-fire exercises for the ARF response crews. Once a year, all the trained ARF firefighters have to go to, I think it's been in Hays the last several years, they have to do live-fire response training, and that, that's a full-day process, and, and so they have to be certified, and then when the inspectors show up, they have to show the inspectors that they know how to, how to, how to put out aircraft, aircraft fires. We'll no longer have to do that. I can, this is kind of a minimal budget thing. All the training that we have to do is all an on, online-based training on all these different wildlife and movement area and stuff. We no longer have to subscribe to that, so that, that saves, like I said, it's, it was just a couple thousand dollars a year. And the other thing we were able to cut would be the, I've got a, a line item account just to address inspection results immediately after the inspection. If there's something that the inspector finds that says, "You need to fix this before I leave tomorrow," I had a little bit of money set aside that I could address whatever it is needed to be addressed, so that, that really would no longer be needed. So that was a little bit of the, kind of the financial impact. Something I wanted to stress, when we do voluntarily return this, if we choose to voluntarily return this, talking with my staff, talking with, with Air Traffic Control, talking with everybody, we will still meet 90% of these standards. We're still going to go out and check the runways every day, we're still going to mow the grass, we're still going to paint, you know, we're still going to check the lights, we're going to keep track of who's operating vehicles inside the, the operations area of the airport. That, none of that really changes. To me, that's just airport best practices. I, I was actually a little bit shocked when I was researching this, how few regulations there are for non-139 airports. And in all my research, a lot of the, talking with some of the other airport managers around the state, they all recommended that if you choose to drop your certificate, your certification manual, which is our interpretation of these federal requirements, you, you edit that and turn it over into an airport operations manual. Basically, take the stuff out that doesn't make any sense, leave the stuff in there that makes sense, that's just good best practices, and then adjust the operations manual to fit your actual operations for the airport, instead of the one-size-fits-all that the, that the FAA, you know, kind of makes us do. So that, that was kind of my, my suggestion. A, a good way to think about this is that we are not actually lessening the standards of how we operate the airport, all we're doing is getting rid of the federal oversight, some of the federal oversight, and who's not a fan of that? So it would allow us to address the issues we feel are a priority over what the FAA feels is a priority. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions or general questions about, about this operating certificate and kind of-
Peter, it's obvious that you spent a great deal of time researching this, and we appreciate it, and your explanation this morning, it certainly makes common sense from what you're talking about. You talk about less regulations, that's good.
Yes.
You talk about streamlining your, your management operations, that's good. Have you researched this or talked to your, your other airport managers in Kansas as to other Kansas airports that have actually dropped the 139 certificate and what has their experience been?
Well, the, the thing, I, I have talked with most of the airport managers in Kansas, I have a pretty good relationship with a lot of them. There are, actually, there have not been any airports in Kansas that have dropped their certificate, because the ones that have the certificates are still trying to get their airlines to come back to them. I think Dodge City and Liberal are both right now, they lost their airlines. They have no intention of dropping it because they don't want to, they're still looking for another, another-
Carriers come in?
Yeah, other air carriers to come in. Talking with Tim Rogers up in Salina, I've chatted with him at length about this, too, and I've kind of, you know, I just flat-out asked him, if you were in this situation, would you keep it or would you, you know, would you get rid of it? Tim said, he goes, "If I were you, I would consider dropping it," and he was the one that suggested turning over into an airport operations manual instead of the certification manual, just because it would allow us to, it would, it'd allow us more freedom to get things done on our schedule instead of the federal schedule. And still maintain the same standards and, and everything, just not have as much oversight.
I don't want to get into the weeds on this, but in your judgment, from a management standpoint, is it important to get some correspondence from FAA that would clarify that if we would do this, that we would not in any way jeopardize our, our future eligibility for FAA funding? Is that important? Is that necessary? Is it, is it critical to have that kind of documentation?
As far as, as actual written documentation, I, I don't have anything like that. I did speak with and, and had email exchanges with, quote, "the money people"
Yes.
Up in, up in Kansas City. And, you know, again, like, like I said, without getting into the weeds, the way they actually calculate discretionary funding for projects is based on lots of different things. One of them is enplanements, and an enplayment is a pa, a paying passenger on an aircraft. Hutcheson hasn't had an, an enplayment since 1999. And so that really hasn't, hasn't played in too much of discretionary funding. And so we are still, we're still entitled to 150,000 dollars a year through the FAA for entitlement funding, and then discretionary funding is based on the priority of the type of projects that we're asking for. So, I mean, I, I could actually receive writing on it, but it, it's kind of the, the FAA's operating standard in the, the sponsor guide, so.
Peter, I think you did an excellent job of just, in, in writing outlining it. I mean, it's good to hear it as well, but it's nice to be able to, to, to refer back to it, so my, my compliments to you in that regards. People change. You're not going to be here forever. And I, the, the idea of the oversight or the requirement by an outside entity keeps that there even as people change. I generally supported the idea of dropping the certification, so don't, don't misunderstand me on that, but it's, I, I'd like to see something that, and I, I heard you talk about the operations, the airport operations manual, and maybe in your mind, that, that's something that's established through the manager's office that, that says the, the airport manager will or shall follow these things. I'm not, again, I'm not sure what your thinking is in, in creating that operations manual, but again, people change. The, the next person may see that as, as more discretionary than maybe how you're looking at it, and, and so that, that's what I'm raising. How do we keep it, you said 90% roughly, but how do we keep that 90% then as, as essentially mandatory as far as we're concerned, without there being some other person or persons or entity that would, would maintain that and, as, as people change?
Sure.
Thoughts maybe also from John as well?
I think we'll have a, I mean, some oversight just from the aviation community, you know, people that, that use our airport, the Airport Advisory Board, so I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and that's something that we would hopefully ensure that we're continued the higher standard than, so I don't see that as an issue, but-
No, I, I, in that, in that memo, I think in your, in your packet, I mentioned that when we, if and when we, we developed as airport operations manager, I wanted to get input from, you know, the, the airfield tenants, from the other city departments that, that help us maintain out there, and, you know, what, what fits us best. You know, as, as far as the next airport manager, whoever and whenever that, that could be, I'll just say, if he's not doing what you guys want, get rid of him. So, you know, that, that being said, I, I, I struggled a little bit when I started considering this and looking at the requirements, because I did feel like I was, I mean, how do I word this? I felt like I was perhaps shuffling off a little bit of the responsibility of the airport, but the more I actually kind of studied what it is we're doing and how we're doing it and, and how I like to run the airport, I realized that's really not the case. I, I think we can actually do a better job and do things the way we think they should be done, instead of the way the FAA certain inspector feels that it should be done, so.
But my comments come from having gone through professionally, moving into being accredited nationally, and then for, for fiscal reasons, and the time it takes to, to meet accreditation and, and therefore some expense as well to back off of that. And at best- it's difficult to, to keep yourself hitting standards.
Sure.
Uh, even, even, even those that you, that you agree with. And that, that's where I'm coming from. And generally, my experience is, but you tend to, you tend to drop off. And then you've got to kick yourself to get yourself back. But, uh, so that, that's, that's where my comments are coming from.
I think the Airport Advisory Committee will function as a monitoring entity, or at least I would hope so.
Oh, very much so. And, and the tenants as well. As far as the, as far as the flying public goes, they're, I mean, they're not, I don't, I don't know how many other airports around the state you've been to that are, that are not non-139 airports, but, um, yeah. I'm, I'm not going to let it look junky.
If I could piggyback on that as well, if, if, um, people change as much as climates, environments, economic situations change, if we ever wanted to reattain that, uh, 139 status, what, what's the process with doing that? And is it better if we were to voluntarily give it up versus have it taken away? Is there a better opportunity to get that back if we chose to accept?
Uh, yeah, to answer your, to answer your second part of your question, absolutely. I would rather us turn it in than, than have it taken away from us. Um, as, as far as meeting the standards again sometime in the future, um, the, the standards are there. I mean, they're, they're written down. This is what you must do.
It's purely meet the standard.
It's meet the standards. They will come inspect and say, okay, you've met the standards, such, such here. You know, you can start looking for your, you know, looking for your airline.
Which lends itself to what Steve says, and everybody else seems to agree. I, I hope we can keep ourselves as close to those standards, even though they're not required, uh, for that very reason. Should something change, we decide to pursue that again.
Absolutely. So, um, when I wrote this memo, I guess I, I wrote it to the, to the city manager, not, I guess not thinking that it was going to end up in, in council hands. So there's, there's nothing on there about, I don't know if we need a motion or anything like that. To actually drop the certificate, all it takes is either a signed letter from the mayor or a signed letter from the airport manager, and the certificate itself, send back to the Airports Division in, in Kansas City. And that's pretty much the end of it. So.
We had that conversation, and I thought it'd be appropriate that the council basically accept, uh, staff's recommendation to, uh, discontinue the certification. So that's why we decided to bring that before you, rather than just do that administratively. Because it's a.
It's a big thing.
It's, it's. We've had it for a long time. And that's, I, like I said, I struggled with it for a little bit trying to figure.
But there is, you know, the reality of, commercial service here is not, not going to happen. So it's, I mean, it's a big thing, but then, you know, I think our operations, you're not going to really see much of a difference in operations. So I don't think you will.
Let's put the mayor's name on it, not yours.
Yeah.
You good with that?
In history of.
So when we reflect upon this.
You're, you're comfortable professionally.
Uh, professionally, I'm comfortable.
You're comfortable with this.
Yep.
Well, it doesn't look like it would have any impact on personal or business aircraft coming in and out of the airport. So.
Not at all.
Nor safety.
Yeah. Yeah.
As well.
And, and it is going to free me up to do some more of the things that need to get done out there that I think that the public and the flying public and, and the city Hutchinson's going to like. So.
Well, we look forward to reports of all the progress you're making with your free time.
Hold me, hold me to it. Yep.
Exactly.
All right. Uh, Peter, we appreciate your researching this and bringing this to, uh, our attention here. Counsel, is there a motion on this item?
Well, if you'll sign it, John, I'll.
And authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll move to approve voluntary dropping the Title 14 CFR Part 139 Commercial Operating Certificate to the FAA.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Do we have a second?
Don't think you've had a second.
I'll second it. All right. We have a motion and a second. Now, let's call roll.
Tyra St. Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
All right, yes. Okay, we're down to reporter city officials, I believe. Linda, Nancy, anything?
Um, I had the opportunity to attend my first League of Municipalities Conference. Found it very enlightening. Worth the time.
Good, good.
Well, I'll second that. It wasn't my first, but it was, was worth the time. Um, I'm probably going to forget somebody. That, that might be, but I want to congratulate Peter. His name was in the program, uh, 10 years of service with the city.
Oh.
Uh.
We had several.
We had several people. Peter, Peter's the person that, that's present right now. Uh, and so just.
Thank you.
Compliment, compliment. We had some folks that, that have had a number of years of service and that.
One as many as 40 years, I think.
Yeah, Roy Little was 40 years. He just retired. And we, we, uh, we talked a little bit about this, but we, we do an annual employee recognition.
And we have a nice, sure, we have a nice recognition.
You know, we used to bring them here and it just, you know, wasn't as effective and, um.
Oh, no, I, the lunch is, the lunch is fun. So.
And that, that's it.
Okay. Very good. Dave, how about you?
Uh, nothing to report.
Nothing?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Nothing to report. Okay. I don't have anything this morning either. John, how about you?
Uh, just, uh, just one quick note. We are, um, uh, beginning, probably then this week, we'll start informational meetings throughout the community on the quarter cent sales tax. It'll be on the ballot in November. Uh, committee is, you know, been working on that and, uh, been, you know, looking at past practice, how we were able to, uh, communicate. And so those meetings will start, uh, I think we got our first presentation this Friday. So if there's anybody out there that has a group or a public group or a civic club that would like to have a presentation, they can contact us here at City Hall and we'll try to get them on a schedule. So.
Good. Anything else? That's all I have. Yeah. That's all you have? All right. Uh, do we have a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call roll.
Tyra St. Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes. Thank you all for being here this morning.